Have the flag all set, no one else?
I'm gonna let everybody in. Just give them a couple of seconds to connect.
I have to call the meeting of the Bradley Beach Land Use Board, order please, please rise with pledge allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. United States of America. To the Republic of Japan. One nation, under God. Thank you.
At this time, we kindly ask that everyone please silence all devices, move to a quiet location, and keep your devices muted until you are called upon to speak, as background noises are distracting to others and they do not allow for a clear recording of these proceedings. The forty-eight hour notice as required under the Open Public Meetings Act has been met, as notice this virtual meeting was emailed on January fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, published in the Esberry Park Press, The Post Star, and The Coaster. A copy has been placed on the bulletin board in the borough office and a copy has been filed with the borough clerk. Mayor Fox.
You.
Mayor, you're muted.
Here, sorry.
Okay, Mr. Murphy. Paul. Oh, gotcha. Councilman Sexton.
Yeah.
Mr. Advento is excused this evening, as well as Ms. Boko. Mr. Cattelli.
Yeah.
Mr. Marco.
Yeah.
Ms. Riley, are you already?
Yeah.
Chair Mayor.
Here.
Mr. Maynard.
Here.
Mr. Shook.
Yeah.
Mr. Rosenberg.
Yeah.
Ms. Saracene.
Yeah.
And also present this evening is Mark Kitchrick, attorney to the board, Gerald Frida, board engineer, and Christine Bell, our board planner.
No correspondents, obviously.
I know, we should just note for the record that David Cattelli was sworn in while we were waiting for the remainder of the board members. He was sworn in by Mark Kitchrick.
Very good. Sorry, Mark, you want to say something?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Let that make motion for approval, adoption of meeting minutes, reorganization meeting, January second, two thousand and twenty-two.
I shook him.
Mayor Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Murphy. Councilman Sexton.
Yes.
Mr. Marco.
Yes.
Ms. Riley, are you already?
Yes.
Mr. Maynard.
Yes.
Ms. Saracene.
Yes.
Chair Mayor.
Yes.
And Mr. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Like to make a resolution for the memorialization, Resolution twenty-two dash oh five, approval of bulk variance, second floor balcony, the roof over the first floor, Dennis and Sharon Luba, block eighty-nine, lot five, six hundred Bradley Boulevard. Need a second, please?
Second.
Mr. Cattelli.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
And Mr. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks. Let's get approval for Resolution twenty-two dash oh one, confirming of election officers for two thousand and twenty-two. Need a second, please?
Second.
Mayor Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Murphy. Yes. Councilman Sexton.
Yes.
Mr. Marco.
Yes.
Ms. Riley, are you already?
Yes.
Mr. Maynard.
Yes.
Ms. Saracene.
Yes.
And Chair Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Let's get approval for Resolution twenty-two dash oh three, designation of official newspapers for legal notices. Need a second, please?
Second.
Mayor Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Murphy. Councilman Sexton.
Yes.
Mr. Marco.
Yes.
Ms. Riley, are you already?
Yes.
Mr. Maynard.
Yes.
Ms. Saracene.
Yes.
Chair Mayor.
Yes.
And I think we skipped one, we missed the approval of the appointments of the professionals.
Oh, yes, we did. Can't forget those.
Really?
It's a new year. I'd have approval for Resolution twenty-two dash oh two, approving the appointment of professionals of two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
Mayor Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Murphy.
Yes.
Councilman Sexton.
Yes.
Mr. Marco.
Yes.
Ms. Riley, are you already?
Yes.
Mr. Maynard.
Yes.
Ms. Saracene.
Yes.
And Chair Mayor.
Yes. And last, approval for Resolution twenty-two dash oh four, approving of the meeting dates for two thousand and twenty-two. Need a second, please?
Second.
Mayor Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Murphy.
Yes.
Councilman Sexton.
Yes.
Mr. Marco.
Yes.
Ms. Riley, are you already?
Yes.
Mr. Maynard.
Yes.
Ms. Saracene.
Yes.
And Chair Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kristi, I'd like to just go over the presentation procedures as we have in the past, just bring them up to date.
Sure.
Just for the public and for all, just to review of how the procedure, what the procedure is for presenting applications to the borough of Bradley Beach Land Use Board. Be aware that the meeting is recorded for transcription. The public is asked not to interrupt, comment in any way, disrupt the presentation or the meeting in general. Once the land use board opens an application, the applicant or attorney will make their presentation with witnesses and professionals. Members of the board will ask questions and cross-examine each witness of the applicant as needed. Members of the audience will be given, will be asked, will be able to ask questions of the applicant and witnesses based only on the testimony given at the end of each witness's presentation. At this time, no comments, testimony, or evidence from the public will be accepted. The board may also call its own witnesses and present its own evidence with respect to any application. Once the applicant has concluded their presentation and the board opens the public comment portion of the application, the public is welcome to comment, present evidence and or testimony regarding the application. Each person will be sworn in under oath and is limited to five minutes. If desired, the applicant may cross-examine you based upon your comments or testimony. If more than one hearing is needed to complete an application, it will be carried to a future date. No new applications will start after nine thirty, unless the board and applicant agree to conclude it in a timely manner, otherwise be carried, and the board reserves final decision. The board will adjourn at a reasonable hour and no witness testimony will be provided after ten PM unless agreed to by the board. Thank you. I guess we're calling. If Amy's in the audience looking for here the Thomas, the Ocean Grace LLC application, use in bulk variances for tonight, it has been carried to the next meeting. So that will not be heard tonight. So we only have one application on the, on the, to go through tonight, and that'll be the bulk ZB twenty-one slash fourteen, bulk variances for demolition and reconstruction of detached garage for the apartment. Jefferson Berry and Barbara O'Connell, block eighty-five, lot five, four twenty-three and a half, Monmouth Ave. And I believe it's Mr. Wedding is the.
That's correct. Mr. Chairman, just before we begin, I just want to alert everyone that both Mr. Maynard and Mr. Sexton Smith will be recusing themselves from the, this application this evening. They've had prior representation by Mr. Wedding, so they're gonna recuse themselves.
Very good.
Okay?
Do they need to leave the meeting?
They do.
Okay, just let it clear.
All right. Enjoy your night, everybody.
All right. Okay, so, Wedding?
And just so we can clarify, the Ocean Grace application is carried to our February seventeenth meeting with no further notice. They are revising the plans. There, there may be, if, if they can't eliminate the use variance portion of the application, which is what they're attempting to do, they will renotice, but as of right now, we're gonna carry them without further notice unless, you know.
February seventeenth.
Yeah, to February seventeenth, and that meeting will also take place via Zoom at this point.
Very good. Floor draws, Mr. Wedding.
Am I, can you?
Mr. Cohen has his hand raised.
Oh. He's muted.
You're muted.
I had a question about the Ocean Grace. I didn't see any LLC certifications as to.
Mr. Cohen, the board has not accepted jurisdiction in that case, so we can't address.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Can you hear me?
We hear you.
All right. I just got a call from my expert, the architect, Michael Moss. Is he on, who's in control of the board? Is it Kristi?
Yes.
Is he?
He's not, he's not in the waiting room.
He's having problems, can't, what's the telephone number that he can call?
To, to call in?
Yeah.
Well, just, he's, he's gonna have to be on video if he's gonna testify, so.
The telephone, the dial-by-location permits, he's got FaceTime.
Okay.
Is that permitted?
Yeah, as long as he's on video, yeah.
But task me through the Zoom app.
What is that telephone number?
Same one you called.
Looking, it's, it's on the front page of the, the agenda.
Is it the New York number there?
I would imagine that would probably be the both of, that's the six four six five five eight eight six five six.
Eight six five six, and then there's a passcode, three six five eight eight six.
Yeah, and he might have to enter the meeting ID if he goes that route as well.
Because he told me his computer died.
Oh, no.
So.
But yeah, if he has the Zoom app on a smartphone, he can join just like everybody else and just tap on the, the link.
Let me give him a call. It's not the way I like to start.
Um, we also have another member of the public with their hand up, Mr. Genoff.
Yes, hi, Kristi. Hopefully you can hear me. Ma'am, my question is, for whatever reason, I'm sorry, I'm on Zoom all day. My video doesn't seem to be working. I'm guessing you can't see me. So will I be allowed to make comments as a member of the public later if you can't see me on video?
You will not. Because, in order, because that's, that's testimony, excuse me, you can ask questions. That's okay, but if you're gonna give a comment, that's testimony, you have to be under oath, and you have to, you have to be on video.
Okay, I'm glad I asked. I'm gonna leave the meeting and try to come on with another device that hopefully will work. Thank you.
Very well.
Thank you.
Is he present now?
Um, no.
Whose iPhone is that?
It's iPhone that I don't know, they've been on there, so.
Can, can you pull that up? Non-mute?
I asked them to unmute. I don't have the ability to unmute them. I have the ability to mute them. I don't have the ability to unmute them.
Let me try and seven, three, two. Five, six, seven. Eight, three, one, one. Come on.
Hello?
Yeah, are you on? We're waiting for you to appear before the board, Bradley Beach Board, Land Use Board.
I cannot find the link. Let's.
Can, I can email you the link. Will that help you, or you're just not having, you're having computer issues?
You can email me that.
I'm gonna email to you right now.
I gotta do this on my phone, so.
Well, do you have the Zoom app on your phone?
Yeah.
Okay, so, if you.
I can't.
If you have the Zoom app downloaded on your phone, you should be able to open the email I just sent you and click on the link.
Thank you.
All right, just by way of what's going on here, this is the application of Jefferson Berry and Barbara O'Connell, who are the owners of four twenty-three and a half, Palmeth Avenue, which is block eighty-five, lot five. They wish to demolish the existing garage and construct a one-bedroom garage apartment structure, which is a permitted use in, in the zone, the residential zone. As part of the package, we have a survey of Paul Lynch dated September eighth, two thousand and twenty, which reveals that there's, it's a five thousand square foot lot where five thousand square feet is required. However, there is a variance necessary because although the property is a hundred and fifty feet deep, which is greater than the requirement of a hundred, it is only thirty-three point three three feet wide, whereas fifty is required. So this requires a minimum width of fifty feet, so that's a pre-existing non-conformity that cannot be remedied. The side yards are also. One of them is three point six four and the other is five point four three, as existing on the front house structure. And you'll hear testimony that there is going to be no, no construction to the main structure at all. What we're here for is a garage apartment. And the accessory structure meets all the, the variances, meets all the requirements of the. How we doing, Kristi? Is he?
Um, yeah, I have Mr. Moss on, but I, he doesn't seem to have video.
Where's Mr. Moss?
Mr. Moss, can you speak up so that you come to the front of the line here? Oh, now he's connecting to audio. Give him a second.
I love this technology.
Hard.
I could do.
Mr. Moss, okay, we can hear you.
Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you, but do you have video? Because you're providing testimony, you have to appear with video.
Uh, I do.
Hit the button.
Sorry about this, guys.
It's on the bottom left.
Start video. Hello.
Ah, yay, see you.
Thank you.
All right, let me.
Very good.
Position. Sorry about the scruffy beard. Hello, everybody. All right, go ahead.
All right, Mr. Moss, I began the application by informing the board that this is the application of Jefferson Berry and Barbara O'Connell. You, in fact, have been retained by them as an architect, is that correct?
I'm just gonna interrupt you there, Mr. Wedding, because let's, let's just square, swear everybody in, okay? So, Mr. Moss is going to be testifying. Anybody else on?
We have Jefferson Berry's.
Okay, so Mr. Berry, raise your right hand, Mr. Moss, along with Ms. Bell and Mr. Frida.
I have a witness, Bob Solinsky.
Well, he would be, he's a neighbor, he would be under the general comments.
Okay, so, we'll wait on that. All right, so, raise your right hand, please, everyone. Do you swear from the tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth tonight proceeding?
I do.
Mr., it just says, Bob, you're not being sworn in now. When you give your comment, then we'll swear you in, okay?
And I'm looking for Mr. Moss.
Here.
I'm here.
There he is. He's on the bottom corner there.
There he is, okay, thank you. Mr. Moss, your occupation?
I'm an architect in residential architectural services.
Do you hold any licenses from the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I'm licensed from the state of New Jersey since two thousand, I believe.
Mr. Wedding? Mr. Moss has been before the board numerous times. I think we can accept his credentials.
Okay, very good. Now, I want to direct your attention to the application of Jefferson Berry and Barbara O'Connell, the owners of four twenty-three and a half, Monmouth Ave. You were contacted by them, is that correct?
Yes, I was.
And it's my understanding that you wished to, they wished to demolish the existing garage and construct a one-bedroom garage apartment structure.
Yes, they do, that's. That's the proposal for the board.
You prepared the, the architectural plans?
I did prepare them, yes.
All right, would you have, can you go over and give us your opinion as to the, the application?
Okay, the owners came to me looking to, they wanted to provide a more living space for family, year-round family members, and they proposed a garage apartment. We were able to do a limited garage, part one-bedroom car, garage apartment that would comply with all the Bradley Beach zoning ordinances for garage apartment, except that we would be over on the building coverage and impervious coverage by a little bit to make, and that's what we're here before the board to ask relief for.
First of all, the accessory, all we're talking about is construction to an accessory structure, is that correct? There's no, no plans on making any changes or construction to the main structure, the main principal residence?
No, the principal residence is not involved. We're just proposing the garage apartment at the rear.
Now, you've had an opportunity to review the the ordinances involved in with the accessory structure of a garage apartment?
Yes, I have.
And you recognize that it is a permitted use in the zone in which this property is located?
It is a permitted use.
How much height is there allowed on the accessory structure?
It's allowed to go to twenty-five feet.
Then, what did you propose?
The building height was twenty-four point six six.
So there's no variance necessary in connection with the, the height?
No, no, no variances with the height or any of the bulk requirements for the garage apartment.
And those both, both, both would be the footprint of the first floor?
Correct, yeah. The setbacks, the, the.
Yeah, the requirement for the foot, the first floor footprint is eight hundred square feet?
Correct, and we're.
You were proposing.
We're proposing. I think it's seven hundred square feet, I believe.
Seven hundred square feet, so that.
Seven oh, seven oh two.
And so that.
And that, and that footprint gets, gets us the minimal one-bedroom apartment, small bedroom in there, twelve by nine, open floor plan, a minimal, the minimal allowable garage to get two cars in it, and it's also designed to match the existing adjacent garage apartment immediately next door on the adjacent lot to the east. And you can, I did submit some pictures. I think they're up there. And you can look at the picture of the existing adjacent garage, picture number two and three also shows you the.
Kristi, do you have those?
I, I was gonna say, let me bring them up.
And it also shows you the existing one-car garage structure that we're proposing to remove.
Now, that, what that existing one-story garage structure has some variances on it, the rear setback is, is in violation of the requirement of five feet, is that so?
Yes, it's, it's a non-conforming structure. The rear yard setback is about four point five on the existing, where five is required. And it's very close to the east property line. It's three feet from the east proper, property line where five feet is required. That would put it in the highly, it's a fire hazard situation, being, being unrated, fire-rated, and being non-conforming that close to the property lines, if any fireworks start within it or adjacent to it, it would, it would, the fire would, would race through that structure. We even, we're proposing the new garage apartment to be, meet all setbacks of five feet on each side, east and west, and the rear yard setback would be five feet. And per current fire code, that would not require a fire rating because it's five feet from the property line. So it's a much safer structure, the new one, as opposed to what's there now as far as fire safety.
Mr. Moss, which, which of the photos did you want to?
Picture one, a picture two and three. But I was just going.
Yeah, that was two. That's, can you see two on the screen now?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I don't.
That's photo three.
My screen doesn't show anything.
Okay, now I just muted myself.
Nothing on the screen.
Just showing.
Right, it's not, I'm owner of cancer, it's, it's a chronic diverticulitis.
Hey, Harvey.
I just gotta watch the media.
Mute yourself, Harvey.
Okay, he's muted. Didn't sound like good news.
No. Kristi, all we can see is your screen, the splash, you can't see the photographs, just see your.
That's interesting. Because I mean, I was only showing.
Yeah, I'm seeing the same thing, just PDF files, but they're not open.
Kristi, if you have the photo open, you might want to unshare and then reshare with that photo.
No, has the video.
Yeah, it's not giving me the option.
There we go.
There we are.
You got it. Okay.
All right, that's a good, good picture of what we were, I was just discussing with the non-conforming structure that we're proposing to remove and the adjacent garage apartment.
So the smaller garage is, is Mr. Berry's. So the smaller garage is, is Mr. Berry's?
Yes.
And the, uh, structure to the, uh, to the east of that is the neighbors.
That's correct.
In connection with the, the proposal that you made, an architectural proposal. You said earlier that you kept it in conformity with the neighbors. Can you explain what you meant by that?
Right, then the, the proposed, um, structure, uh, would be aligned with the front of the neighbor's garage apartment, keeps it in line. Uh, it's gonna be the same, uh, same height. And, uh, basically the same footprint. It's very close to the same footprint. Ours is a little bigger.
And is yours also designed with the pillars and the, uh, the garage doors?
Similar, similar design. It will be, um, complimentary, um, to the neighbor. But it's, uh, the architectural style is Dutch colonial, um, and that's, um, in keeping with the, uh, principal structure is a Dutch colonial gambril roof style. And you can see that on the elevations on drawings, Z two, the architectural style is, says a couple dormers. And, um, amber roof. So they will, they'll look pretty handsome, uh, together.
Alright, now there was, uh, the garage apartment footprint is, is less than, than the requirement of eight hundred square feet. You said, mentioned earlier that seven hundred square feet.
Seven hundred and two, correct.
And that would be sufficient to, uh, to park two cars?
Yes, uh, on the drawings, I have the, um, the Z one drawing. I have two cars indicated inside the, uh, the, um, garage floor plan, one, uh, that's one, uh, actually. I'm sorry, yeah, it's Z one, Z one. Uh, and that van or, uh, SUV is an Escalade, uh, size, so that's about the biggest we get. And it'll, that'll tuck itself in there. And that's the minimum garage. Basically, uh, uh, minimum garage to get cars in there and have rooms. Get an Escalade in there, but, you know, so you can get that in there, you can get any, basically anything else in there. And it's two cars.
Okay. Now, you mentioned earlier that there was the, no variances required for the structure, the the accessory structure. However, there is some, uh, building coverage and impervious coverage.
Right, the, uh, building coverage is, we're proposing would be over. Um, and that would be, we're looking at forty-one point three percent.
Where thirty-five percent is permitted?
Thirty, thirty-five percent is permitted. Let's go over.
But can you make, do you propose making the garage apartment any smaller or is that the minimum size that you?
No, we reduced the garage apartment, uh, as much as we could, um, to the six or the five fifty. Um, and we went through several rounds of designs and, uh, several meetings of designs to come up with a floor plan that met everybody's, uh, liking and, um, that's, uh, you know, the, the bedroom and the open floor plan is, that's about the, the basic minimum you can do for a one-bedroom apartment. And it is under the allowable.
So variance is required, thirty-five percent permitted, forty-one point three percent proposed. Right now, there's a second variance, uh, which is the maximum impervious coverage permitted per the zone.
That's correct.
The ordinance calls for a maximum of sixty percent?
Yes.
Now, you, you had put on your plans that the, uh, the impervious coverage was sixty-seven point eight-five, the proposed. However, the, uh, Jerry Frieda, the, uh, borough engineer has recalculated that to be seventy-eight point eight percent. Can you, you explain the difference between the two?
Yeah, I took the reduction on the, uh, for permeable pavers. And, uh, apparently the, uh, we're, there was, uh, no allowance for permeable, permeable pavers. I'll go with, uh, Jerry seventy-eight point eight.
That's if paver, pavers are utilized?
That's if, yeah, if, if, if that driveway was, uh, all, um, concrete paver or brick paver or asphalt, it would go up to seventy-eight point eight, as Jerry has indicated. Uh, however, I, I am proposing a, uh, pervious paver. And that's, I have included the spec sheets. And that, that's, uh, if we can pull though, there they are.
So that's not a pervious, that's not a paper, that's a, a grid system?
It's a grid system. It's, uh, it allows water to go through. You can, uh, look at the spec there. Uh, they put in their specification, it's a hundred percent uh, pervious. We know it's not a hundred percent pervious, so, but if you took the hundred percent, uh, the driveway area that we're proposing is four hundred and sixty-eight square feet. And if we were to consider this system, uh, at a hundred percent pervious, it would reduce the the, uh, imperv, or the impervious coverage down to sixty-nine point five percent, using the four hundred and six, using Jerry's number. And deducting four hundred and sixty-eight. Now, I don't know, can you go ninety percent?
So we would, none, none of these provisions are permitted as per the ordinance to, to lessen the requirement for variance. It's just that you are proposing a system that has more permeability than.
Absolutely, you can grow. I mean, uh, I mean, if you, if you look at the information there, you can grow in the pictures, or a picture shows the lawn, you can grow a full lawn through there. And, um, you wouldn't even, you wouldn't even know the system was in the ground. And it's, um, designed to hold, uh, light parking. In other words, automobiles, doesn't hold commercial, it's not a commercial use, but it is for residential use. And I don't believe the, um, there's gonna be a lot of parking out there. It's not.
But you did make for, for, for parking spaces.
We do, we do have four, we, I do have room for, for, for parking spaces.
And there'd be two in the garage?
And two out in the front.
Two underneath the overhang.
Well, underneath the overhang would be, and partially out front of the building. And you could also turn those, uh, ninety degrees and get two cars at ninety degrees if, if, if you had, absolutely had to. So there's room for four cars, but, uh, I don't see that. Uh, there's not a parking problem on Monmouth Avenue. I'm living three houses down from, from the, uh, owners here. And, um, we don't usually have a problem on Monmouth Avenue parking in the street, although we do have the required force bases. If, if absolutely needed.
Mr. Wedding, uh, this is Jerry. Can I jump in here or do you want me to wait?
No, I'm done.
Okay, just, uh, if I could for the board, um, everything that was testified to is correct regarding the, uh, porous pavers. Um, our ordinance and many, many ordinances in the state, they don't give allowances for such, uh, porous pavers, um. It's kind of new in the industry, but typically if it, it's given a reduction, somebody may give it a fifty percent reduction. Something of that nature. And you need to look at it. In this example, the ground's pretty flat. So there's no steep slopes. You're not gonna have water rushing off it. Uh, there will be seepage, but we just don't know how much. That's number one. And then number two, there is a, a good amount of maintenance that needs to be done on these things. Once they're put in, you know, a couple of years down the road, and then again, and again, and again. And one of our issues and problems with the porous pavers is getting people to take care of them, because we have no assurance that that'll be done. In this case, it would be the board's prerogative to grant that because the ordinance doesn't. So if you approve the variance, um, you will, there will be some relief. It's not like a concrete driveway. Um, but it isn't going to be a hundred percent pervious. So I hope you guys can kind of grasp that when you're going to make a vote or ask questions. Okay?
Do you recommend pervious pavers over concrete or?
Um, well, in such a case as this, I think you're using the product correctly. Um, and I think it will help, uh, provided it's maintained. But from, from the ordinance, as it's written, there's no relief for the.
We need a variance, but we.
You still need a variance for the seventy-eight, uh, percent. Seventy-eight point eight percent.
Alright. I'll open it to the, the architect to questions of the board.
Abe, I see you have a hand up?
Yeah, um, is there any benefit or is it allowed? Old school stone driveways? That was typically old beach town scenarios. Riverstone, sandstone type thing. Does that, uh, help with impervious coverage at all? Um, could, could that be an option?
That directed to you, Jerry, or?
Uh, well, um, it, it could be, uh, provided, uh, you know, as a property owner, they really probably don't wanna be walking on loose material. And that's why the porous pavers are a better option. You're right about the stone. It would allow water to, uh, seep into the ground, but even the stone after a while, the tire tracks over and over and over and over and over. Uh, it becomes rutted and it, uh, doesn't act like it did when it was first put in. Actually, the porous pavers will hold up longer provided they're maintained.
It was just a thought.
No, it was a good thought.
Uh, the pictures, uh, if you look at the photos again, they're showing there is, uh, stone gravel.
The backyard.
Existing throughout the whole, uh, adjacent property and the, uh, up the, uh, the driveway on the owner's property. And that picture there shows the, we, I didn't mention that there's a shared driveway to access both the, both garages in the back here. And that photo there on the screen indicates the shared driveway going to the back.
And that's a, a D to D, isn't it? With the, with the lamps.
Yes.
So, so the, the new pavers, the, this new system, that's only gonna go from the back by the deck there over to the new garage apartment?
That's.
Is that how I interpret that? Because if that's a, that's a shared driveway, was how are you gonna handle a transition? It's a shared driveway. How do you transition the center, the center point of that, of that driveway? Is it, I, I'm just trying to understand how it's gonna look.
Well, you could, uh, you could grow the lawn right to the property line, uh, through those, through the proposed system. You can also put gravel to match the adjacent property, uh, in the easement would, uh, probably be better. So it's an either or situation. Is, uh, this grid system's amenable to gravel, uh, situations or lawn or?
So, but Mr. Moss, uh, is, is the, the system going to actually stop at the property line? Or is it gonna go over to the neighbor's property to incorporate their half of the driveway too? Cause I, I'm just kinda curious how that, that middle of the driveway, you gotta drop off the plastic side and you have gravel on the other side. How is that going to hold up? And how's that new system gonna be supported?
Uh, that's why I would suggest that.
Talk to, uh, Bob Solinsky about that.
I don't, I, am I muted or unmuted at this point?
You're unmuted.
Um, I have no objection to the proposed, um, system, uh.
You can't act, come up, public can't talk yet.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. I'm just, I'm just trying to understand how that's gonna work. And that driveway, how that half driveway is gonna work in the back?
I would do the, in the easement area, which would be, I think it's eight feet wide. I'm not exactly a hundred percent, so. Uh, on the, on the owner's side, our side, uh, I would suggest you put four feet of gravel uh, in the easement so that you're not running over, uh, half of its grass and half of its stone. So I would match the adjacent stone. And then, uh, beyond that, on our side, any, it could, it would be lawn. I would suggest lawn, uh, impervious. And that gives the owner the option of, uh, more backyard as well if they don't park cars there. It's a good option for them.
Well, I gotta jump in here. For this to be a garage, it has to be accessible by, you know, some type of surface, driveway surface. They can't use lawn. Uh, so that can't happen there. They also need to park two other cars outside between the house and the new garage. So that can't be long. Um, but I think the board's gotta take a look at this and if you like the project, the porous pavers may be the way to go from a stability standpoint and from an aesthetic standpoint versus the stone or half of that driveway being taken up to put in a four-foot strip of something different. I, I don't recommend doing those things unless the board wants to try and get as close to that sixty percent as they, as they can. Uh, what I do recommend though is that the, um, roof, the drains from the roof of the new garage get piped out to the street. Um, it's in my letter. Um, I think that's a, a fair request, since it's a narrow lot and you don't want water from your property running onto your neighbors. Um, I think if you guys can provide that with the porous pavers, I, I think that's a better plan than something else, or at least some of the ideas we've heard so far.
We get enough pits to get that into the street, Jerry? Or we need to put that in a drywall somewhere on the property?
If you have room for a drywall, that's, that's perfectly fine. Um, the only other way you can get there really is to get down the, I guess it would be the west side of the, of the house with a pipe.
Right.
Right down to the, you know, between the curb and sidewalk with like a pop-up emitter and let it pop up and drain out.
Okay.
But it is, i- it is an issue because you have a narrow lot and you're exceeding the sixty percent allowed. So we do have to put some type of mechanism in to get the water out.
Uh, we would provide a drainage plan with the construction documents.
So, so, uh, for the board, um, that would be a condition of approval should you decide to approve the project with the variances. That that condition be met, grading plan with drainage improvements, uh, such as both, as Moss and I just discussed. Subject to your approval. That'd be fine.
Mr. Show?
Uh, yes, uh, that's what I was gonna recommend. Also, I was gonna make a suggestion that on the, uh, east and west side of the house, uh, I noticed that there's concrete about the two feet, three feet of it. Uh, maybe we could remove that concrete, uh, puts, uh, either decorative stone or, uh, grass or something which will reduce the impervious coverage and also the, uh, pervious blocks. Uh, that might bring him down to almost sixty-something percent, sixty-two, sixty-three percent. Uh, I haven't done the calculation. Jerry, you're.
No. No, I don't think he's gonna get that much of a reduction, no. That's why I believe the way that they've got it laid out is probably the most practical means. It's just dealing with the percentages and what the board's comfortable with.
Okay.
Jerry, may I ask you a question, one thing about the dry well? I obviously have two choices, the pipe on the ground to the street, which means you have to tear up that half of the common driveway to get to it. Is that, would that be true?
Yeah, unless they can sneak by on the other side.
Oh, I mean, okay, I see what you're saying.
There's enough room on the west side.
Okay.
Yeah, it's tight, but they may be able to run a pipe. Um, you know, they put in a dry well to take the water off the roof of the new building and maybe run a pipe from the dry well, an overflow pipe, small pipe out to the street between the sidewalk and the curb with a pop-up emitter. That would be a really good way to handle it. Uh, but, you know, we, we'd have to work those details out.
Be either way, either ways, either way it works.
It can work.
Okay. Any more que, any more questions from the board?
Oh, yes, I have one more. One more question, I'm sorry. Uh, there's a, I I noticed in the, uh, picture that was, uh, being shown uh, that there's a tree in between the two garages. It's a small tree. Uh, uh, am I correct in that? And
You are.
Okay, uh, whose tree is that?
It's a weed.
It, it's a weed, it's not a tree?
Yeah, it's not.
Right there, uh, where, uh, yeah, Chris, in between, yeah, right there.
Uh, I think that's Bob's tree. It's not much of a tree.
Well, uh, I, is that gonna be removed, uh, only because the shade tree commission has requested that any trees that are removed on a property to, uh, make any, uh, uh, which we call additions, uh, you know, as far as, uh, buildings or anything that, uh, a tree be either relocated or dedicated to be planted somewheres else? And, uh, perhaps maybe we could, uh, have the applicant, uh, donate a tree to the shade tree commission to place it, uh, you know, somewheres else, uh, in some planting strip or in a park or something.
Yeah. It's, it's Bob's tree, but I'll, I'll donate a tree somewhere else.
By the way, who's speaking right now?
I am, what?
You want to know about the trades?
And, and who, who is speaking?
The applicant.
Okay. Mr. Wedding? He's not testifying yet. If you want to put him on, you can put him on, but we're, we're, uh, you know, we're, we're dealing with this, Mr. Moss's testimony. The questions are, are of Mr. Moss. Mr. Wedding, if you want to make that offer regarding the tree, you, you can do so or put your client on to testify later.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Um, if we're done with the, uh, the architect, I can bring this Barry on, otherwise.
There's actually two board members who, uh, appear to have their hands raised for questions.
And then after that, questions from the public of Mr. Moss.
Yes.
Mr. Kotel, uh, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, Cle- Cleary, Clardy?
It's Eirarty.
Okay, thank you.
That's okay. Um, I know we just spent a lot of time on the pavers, but, um, am I able to ask questions about the other parts of the variances in the structure?
Yes.
Okay, um, so I guess my question is, you're increasing the footprint almost two hundred percent. So even though you're, even though the allowable, uh, the size is supposed to be eight hundred square feet is what you're allowed and your guys are going to seven hundred. I still think going from two thirty or whatever it is to that seven hundred square feet is a pretty large imposition for the neighborhood, the neighbors. How much smaller can you get that? I mean, I know you said you looked at it, but I still feel like that's a really huge increase for a structure.
Uh, we looked at that, making that, um, spent several design sessions trying to make that as tight and as small as possible because we knew we were going over the total allow allowable building coverage, but you know, and we reduced everything to, uh, the bedroom size is minimal, the kitchen is tight. Everything's tight as far as that, so that, you know, that gives us an apartment that's less than the allowable. And it all, you know, uh, part of the, the, the design solution was to match the adjacent, uh, property. Very similar looks, you know, if we, we start doing something different size, different scale, it's gonna look awkward standing next to each other, in my opinion. Uh, but we are reduced, the garage is reduced to minimum and we're under the eight hundred. And that two hundred and thirty or whatever, two forty square foot existing structure is a non-conformity and a fire hazard in, in my opinion. So, uh, you know, we want to be nicer to get a uh, a newer code compliant structure in, in, in place of it. It meets the setbacks of the town.
And then for the height, what is the height of the building next to it that you're trying to mirror?
I believe that's a little tall. I don't know exactly, but I believe that's a little taller than twenty-five feet. That's all grandfathered in.
Correct. So then even though, so you would still be off from your measurements because you could never really match that one next to it because it is taller than twenty-five.
No, it's gonna be a little, little, uh, smaller. You're not gonna be able to, it's gonna be imperceptible almost, uh, by the human eye when you're standing, looking at it. Might be a foot or two. And both of the, you know, the ridge line where you're talking about the tallest point of the, uh, adjacent property and the proposed, the ridge lines, uh, you know, it's, it's, uh, running front to back or north to south, and they're both running in the same, same direction, so. It's gonna be, you know, twin buildings almost, other than the architectural little bit difference, the colonial versus the Dutch colonial. It's got the pillars there, they're gonna work together, both both sides. There's three on the, on the adjacent property. We're proposing two, very similar. So I think it's gonna be pretty handsome next to each other.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, the, the question about the impervious that's been being brought up. Is there any potential logic to the material that's being suggested to be used as a driveway material? Um, replace the, the patio and the masonry deck to allow more potential impervious coverage. I, i- i- it's just a thought. If, if that's still a concern of the impervious.
Well, I think
that could be, you know, fluidly run through the whole backyard that, uh, that runs all together.
I think the drain covers the, uh, the over, the water overflow on the impervience aspect of the project. Is that correct, Jerry?
Um, well, let's see, I'm looking at the comment, I wanna is the, though the composite deck probably already allows water to fall through because the decks have, uh, between each, uh, decking member, there's usually a small little, uh, gap. But Mr. Kotel's point about the patio. Now, the elevated, first off, the elevated, there's three different things here. There's the elevated porch, like it says, elevation, I guess that's masonry. Patio. I don't know if they're all at the same level or not. But it looks like there's steps to get down to grade. So if that's the case, you're gonna have to build more steps off the house to come down to that level. And when you have more than two steps, you have to have a landing. So now that in the back becomes probably almost, you know, eight, nine feet from the house, you're pushing that away. So it's such a small area, the little bit you regain, you'd probably you may end up losing. But I think that maybe the property owner could speak to that issue, knowing the property better than I do.
I'll call Mr. Barry. And Jerry, I'm gonna ask you to ask the question because I'm, I'm not quite clear on what you were discussing.
Sure, no problem.
I'm not quite clear either.
Well, that is what, it is two, two diff, it's, it is two different levels, Jerry. I think a, uh, the main porch area comes out of the sliding door, French door there. And it steps down to the east, it steps down to a level with, I believe there's a shower or something there, and then it steps to grade. So it is two le- levels, and that's all the masonry part of it. You know, round to the, uh, east side is the decking, uh, traditional wood frame composite decking.
And, and, uh, i- is that elevated and is it built traditionally? With a small gap between the, okay.
Yeah, so elevated to the first floor level as well.
Right, so Mr. Mr. Kotel's point, uh, i- it was a good place to try and help the situation a little bit, but I don't know that it can be done because of the different elevations of those, those, uh, of those structures.
Again, just a thought.
No, it was a good thought.
Mr. Fox?
Yeah, this is, um, probably for Jerry. Um, so there's a project going on, a sump pump, um, project on the five hundred and four hundred block of Monmouth, and it's a couple of the blocks, but um, we're, we're, we're tying in some of the sump pumps that, um, generate a lot of water out into the street, um, in, into the storm drains. Jerry, is there a way, you know, with the, with the, with, with the mitigation you talked about, um, with the pipes? That we could tie that, tie those pipes into that, um, project potentially?
Yeah, I think that, um, that could be
I'm just thinking about that stormwater, you know, it would, it would, it would really get the stormwater where it needs to be.
Yeah, I, I do think it could be tied in if that was, uh, something they would like to do, yes.
And, and do you think that would help this, help the situation?
Well, um, different from a sump pump, you know, that's when the groundwater table's high, it doesn't matter if it's a sunny day or a rainy day. We have issues in the road. Uh, in this case, with a, with a dry well, um, we won't have those same issues. It'll only be during a period of rain. Um, so the pop, the, the pop-up emitter would, would suffice. But if they wanted to tie into that new pipe that's coming, they'd be welcome to.
Okay.
Right, that's, that's an option they would have.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes, Mr. Moss, in your, um, communications with the applicant, or you may just know directly, the intended use of this um, year-round seasonal?
Yes.
One, one or the other. Maybe I'll call Mr. Barry for that.
Okay, and I'm gonna tie that question then back to Mr. Moss on the, the overall size of the project. Um, obviously there's size requirements and minimum sizes um, through the construction code that are required for minimum positive bedrooms and habitable room. Do you know off top of your head or you have in front of you how in relationship to those minimum standards you are, um, exactly how much smaller you could go? And was this designed to be a year-round rental or a seasonal?
This is the applicant. Can I, can I answer part of that? I'm, um, I'm a new grandfather and, uh, family, family comes down, um, on a, a regular basis, but the family's growing. Uh, really, at this time, really looking just for a couple extra places for people to stay when they come down to see us.
So you're, you're not gonna rent it out?
I have no plans to rent, rent it out at all. It's just like, we're just sort of, I've grown the, the main house and uh, the other part of it is, is Michael said, I mean, when you take a look at the picture of those two structures in the back, the thing that we're replacing is, is hideous. And I have, I have a couple neighbors here that will testify to the idea that on either side of me, they would love to see that replaced.
Understood, now we're just trying to tie the use of it into the room size. It's obviously something with super small or overly small rooms down as small as they can go for the construction code makes it seem more of a
Yeah, and Michael, Michael, uh, Michael Moss and I went back and forth on this quite a bit and, um, it's really pretty, as small as it can reasonably be. The other part of it is, is that if you want something back there that looks like normal, you want something that's gonna match the other structure somewhat.
No, and, and again, it needs to be livable. So we're saying it's small as it possibly can be, but that's because it's gonna be intended for use uh, on a rotational basis by family that's coming down.
Yeah, it's really, it's gonna be sporadic. No, people are not gonna be living there full-time, although to say it's seasonal, I mean, would, you know, particularly like to hear during COVID, we've had people down there, you know, staying at the house for weeks at a time.
Um, Jerry, can you speak to the, the pavers, um, the maintenance on them or what you've seen about maintenance-wise?
On, on the porous pavers?
Yes.
And I can speak to that as well.
Sure. Um, again, the industry standards, they've been performing well. Um, they do, there are certain issues if they're not installed properly with a freeze stall cycle. Uh, but provided they're installed properly and they're maintained, they operate, um, they hold up very well.
Listen, on the, on the hex grid, the hex grid in this design was my choice. I mean, I saw this as an impervious, uh, you know, yeah.
Mr. Barry, Mr. Barry, we, we can't be proceeding like this. We had, we still have Mr. who's being asked questions.
Okay.
Once again, Mr. Wedding, you, you have every right to put your client on, but we have to have a procedure.
I thought he had
Board members have, the, the board members have questions of Mr. Moss, let's get through that, and then we have to go to the audience who gets to ask questions of this witness, rightly so. So let's, uh, let's try to stay with that program if we could.
Okay, Mr. Mr. Moss, the favors that are being presented, are they, is it possible to put stone on top of them? When you put these papers down first and then a stone goes on top?
So the question was, can they put stone in loose stone rather than the actual paper?
No, 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 I, no, hang on, let me, let me try to shoot this again. I've seen a similar grid, hex grid system where that is down as a base layer and then stone goes on top of it and fills in the void space. And you can still see the hex grid, but there's stone inside of it. Or this is different, this is, this is literally the actual paper service you're blocking on.
Um, i- in this case, it's the actual paver that's in there, but it does act the same way. I've also seen what you're suggesting. And that is also a way that they could hold up if somebody wanted to present it that way. But the problem again is when you have loose surface, um, it's harder to walk on. It can't help but rut out with tire tracks running over and over and becomes really a maintenance issue. No, you're welcome.
Ms. Saracens?
Hi, I, I had just a couple of questions. A few echo, um, what Mr. Murphy has already brought up, um, but you know, I, I, I realize the lot is, is not large, so making some of these improvements is going to be challenging to stay within, you know, some of the boundaries that the town has created. Um, and I was wondering, are, are you, are the, is the applicant a full-time resident, um, of this property?
Again, you're asking me. Mark, can she, can he answer that?
Oh, you're gonna put him on, so why don't we have him address that when he? testifies, unless you can answer, Mr. Wedding.
I can answer it, I can't answer.
If you know the answer, you could answer it, I suppose.
Yes, it's my understanding that it's, it's used periodically by the, the family, not as a permanent resident. Is that correct?
I guess, is the applicant the primary, is this their sole residence?
No, is that correct?
All right, well, if, if you're, if you're not sure, why don't we, why don't we wait?
We, we, one more question from Harvey. You're muted. You're muted.
Can't hear you, Harvey.
I have a question, I saw in the photo of the backyard, the, the other neighbor, is his backyard all gravel? Because that's what it looked like. If you make it all gravel, that'll also help the permeation of the ground, just gravel, if that's what is in there, trying to match the neighborhood to an extent. Moss? Where Mr. Moss go?
He's actually, I'm letting him back in, he got booted out, he's coming back in.
That's, that's a question, am I reading that correctly in that photo? That was, just looked like white gravel in that photo.
So i- it's Jerry again, maybe I can help.
Yeah, so, so what would that do with the, with the coverage number?
Well, we, we kind of were talking about that before, about stone. And my comments were mostly meant for the driveway from the road to the back of the houses. But we did say if the board would prefer gravel instead of the porous pavers, that was, sounded like something that the applicant would agree to, but I don't know for sure, we'd have to physically ask that question.
And what does that change in the coverage number?
It does. Oh, it could change, it would, it would change that, that area between the structures, because it would then be impermeable instead of impermeable.
Right, that's a term. And my, and my other question.
But hold on now, remember again, you gotta look at two ways. There's one thing to be walking on stones, nothing to be walking on paper, right? So the paper is much cleaner and easier to maintain. Stands that the stone area is subject to rutting and stone getting pushed out of the way and grass growing through it. So as long as everybody understands that, and if the board wants to make that a condition of approval, that's up to the board to do, you can do that. So it would help the impermeable coverage, it would bring that down, it wouldn't get it below sixty, but it'll bring it down. Or they can stay with the porous pavers, which isn't recognized by our ordinance, but we know in industry standards that it does allow water to seep through.
And the drain sys- drainage system too.
And then the drainage system would be done on top of that to take the water off the roof, and if they could collect anything else.
And, and the other thing I heard somewhere in this testimony that he's not gonna rent it, is he willing to put that in a, in a, in a deed restriction, that he would not rent the property at any, to the back.
So I would defer to Mr. Kitterick on that, I'm not sure legally how that's handled.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm asking Mr. Wedding and Mr. Moss.
I would recommend against, you don't know in the future what's going to happen.
Okay, because, but he did mention that he's not renting.
He's not, I know he doesn't promote it, but I don't know if you want a deed restriction on the property.
Well, possibly as long as they own it, then they wouldn't rent it.
I could talk.
Part of this, that could be, that could be part of this agreement.
Well, okay, so if it's, if it's not a deed, deed restriction, which I understand why Mr. Met Wedding would not recommend that advice, but if it's not a deed restriction, we can certainly put in the resolution that as long as this applicant owns the property, they will not rent it out, however, that would be extremely difficult to enforce.
But it's there for something to think about.
Right.
Any more questions from the board for Mr. Moss?
Mr. Cattelli has his hand raised.
Not, not for Mr. Moss, for, for Mr. Frida. The way I understand it, what you're saying is putting stone down or putting clamshells down or oyster shells down are going to be more of a maintenance and potential problems than this hex thing that they're proposing. Am I understanding this correctly?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Again, any more questions in the board for Mr. Moss? Seeing none, open this portion of the application to the public for questions to Mr. Moss. Mr. Cohen?
Thomas Cohen, six twelve Third Avenue. Mr. Moss, regarding this building next door, can you tell me how far off the property line that building is?
I believe that's three feet. Yeah, the surveys look, scales out to three feet on, on my Z1 drawing.
So, so based on fire code, that's not a compliant structure, is it?
I don't know if that was rated or not. I know it was renovated, I was involved in that with the contractor a while ago, but I don't know if that was fire-rated wall over there.
And being so close, are the gutters to that building gonna be right on the property line with the gutters to this building?
No, if there's three-foot setback and ours is five, it's eight feet between it, it's pretty good distance.
Okay, but then if you have two-foot overhang on your side, and they have a two-foot overhang on the other side, those gutters are, and then a gutter six inches. So you're gonna be very close.
Yeah, well, the, the looking at the picture of the adjacent, that overhang's not more than twelve inches. And I don't know, let me see what our overhang is gonna be, or proposed. Our mile overhang is sixteen inches. So twelve on their side and sixteen on, on ours.
And plus the gutter.
From eight, from eight feet.
Have you been involved in this project from the beginning?
Pardon?
Have you been involved in this project right from the beginning?
Absolutely, yes.
So when you started the project and you saw that the, the existing impervious coverage was sixty-four point seven, and the existing building coverage was thirty-two, that didn't tell you that the property was already built out, did it?
The project, yeah, the project is over on impervious and and on building coverage, it's not much over percentage-wise in my, in my belief with the building coverage.
You're, you're three percent under, so that leaves you a hundred and fifty square feet till you get to the conforming maximum thirty-five percent, is that correct?
I believe that's close, yeah.
So, so that would give you a hundred and fifty square feet of additional square footage to build to keep it under the thirty-five percent.
From the existing you're talking.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I got, I've, yeah, I didn't really, I didn't work those numbers out.
Okay, and then this garage, if this garage was maintained properly with a new roof and siding, would it be an eyesore to the neighborhood?
That's subjective.
Okay, well, well, you testified that wasn't unattractive, so I just wanna clarify that it, is it a maintenance issue?
You could dress it up, but it's still, it's still, it's still a non-conforming fire trap to me. As a professional, I wouldn't wanna be the fire department trying to you know, rescue the adjacent buildings if that were to start on fire. That's gonna, you know, that's a tinderbox right now, and it's too close to the other, the both buildings, you can look at the photos. So any kind of fire starts there within that building, it's gonna race right through the structure and into the adjacent building very quickly. There's no one hour, there's no one-hour fire rating on, on that.
That existing building could, could be upgraded, could it not, if it had been maintained?
It could be upgraded, yeah.
Great, thank you very much, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions from the public to Mr. Moss? Seeing none, Mr. Wang, you want to bring your
Yeah, I'll call Mr. Barry.
Please.
I had a question, I just don't know how to raise my hand on the, on my
Hey, Mr. Janoff, you have a question?
As to who?
Thank you, yeah, I, a question for Mr. Moss.
So Wang, you mind?
Oh, go ahead.
I think, I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not, this is the first time I've been in a meeting like this, or if I break any, any rules, I have comments. If I can ask a question, it's great.
Sure, Mr. Janoff, just give us your address, please.
Four fourteen Monmouth Avenue.
Thank you.
So I, I guess, you know, my question is that, that, that back structure that's there now is certainly ugly, I guess, or that's subjective, but maybe ugly. It's a fire hazard and not built to the code, I guess, is what I heard earlier. So can't you tear it down and, and are you able to build a back structure that is just to code? Or are you, or is the, is the width of the lot too small, so you really can't have a structure there if you don't get a variance?
Another structure could be built there in its place.
But could it be where you don't need to seek any variances, so you'll have the proper setbacks to code?
All, all of what we're proposing, we have, all of the setbacks are in compliance. It's just the coverage overage as proposed, building coverage overage. Setbacks, everything else is in compliance with the current zoning, all, you know, the bulk, the height, the setbacks, all of that's in compliance with the current zoning.
Or, or should we, you're looking for a variance because the lot is not wide enough, it's thirty-nine feet or whatever, not fifty feet, so does that mean that technically, I'm just, I don't, I don't know the answer, that technically somebody couldn't even build a back structure there because it's too narrow, or is it that you just wanna build a back structure that's bigger than what the lot size would allow?
We're, we are proposing the one-bedroom apartment and two-car garage, and we're keeping it to a minimum, and we're aligning it with the adjacent structure, keeping in mind the scale and the
I, I understand that, isn't there a variance because the property isn't wide enough?
It's not because it's wide, wide enough, we're going, we're we're complying with the side yard setbacks and the width, the five-yard east, or east yard setback and the five-yard, five-foot west side. So the fact that it's thirty-three point thirty-four foot, we're proposing a twenty-three foot, point four foot structure, so it complies with the width, the, the allowable setbacks on the width for an accessory structure. Can we do a, can we do a smaller one? I think we've testified, or testified that we've reduced this to to, you know, bare minimums really, so to the minimum to fit two cars in, and the minimum for a reasonable one-bedroom apartment.
Right, okay, so if you, so it could be smaller for one, or instead of two, it's what you would like to have there is I think what I'm hearing, but I have, all right, thank you, I'll save my comments. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Any other questions in the public for Mr. Moss? Let's move on to, Mr. Wang, you're gonna ask your applicant.
Mr. Barry, where do you, where is your permanent residence?
I live in Philadelphia.
And how, how long have you owned the property at Monmouth Avenue?
We bought it in, I think, in two thousand and two.
Right, how, how do you, do you rent it out, or how do you utilize the property?
The place where my, my daughters come down, my, now my granddaughter comes down. You know, it's kind of a, a family place, obviously, we're down in the summer more than the winter. Thanksgiving, Christmas, Easter, Mother's Day, Father's Day, Fourth of July.
Now, you've, you've heard that there's a re- request for pervious pavers. What, what's your what do you recommend?
Well, I looked at all the different options with Mike Moss, and I like this hex grid system, I understand it involves, you know, my keeping up the, the maintenance on it. While I was not aware that I wasn't get a pervious allowance for it, it seems like the drainage on it is, is gonna be better. What we have now, Bob Zelinski and I share this back area, and it's all stone right now. And, you know, I would go, I would go with that if, if that's, if that's really pivotal, I think, I think the hex grid works better though. I've not heard, you know, objections to it, really.
And you agree to to provide a tree to the, as requested.
Yes, I, I like planting trees. The other suggestion, talking about the cement going down the driveway, we both, we both share the cement that goes off of both houses keeps the water from going into the basement. So that, that those cement walkways on either side of Mr. Zelinski's house and mine, that, that has to be that way. It's sloped off, so the water runs off of, off of that, not into my basement.
Now, you heard there was a request by the, the engineer for a dry well to the west of the property.
Yeah, so that, yeah, I think that's, that's reasonable, I mean, and, and we've, we've got a little bit, a small dry well in front of the, the the unit now, we dug a place for, for water runoff. And Bob has one as well.
All right, and your neighbors, you call him Bob, what's his last name?
Bob Zelinski. There you go. The Zelinski's are to the east of us.
And who's to?
He owns the property to the east of us and owns the building that we're trying to aesthetically match. So, got questions for him? Good neighbor.
That's all I have right now. Of Mr. Barry.
Any questions on the board from Mr. Barry? Actually, Mr. Frida, I gotta ask you a question. On the, on the shared driveway, as Mr. Barry has testified, there's two concrete strips that are butt the foundations. In the middle between the two concrete strips appears to be, is, is that an asphalt strip?
It is, yes, it's, it's, yes, it is.
Just, I'm not, I'm just throwing it out, what if the strip was removed and the hex pattern was brought in there too, how would that help the impervious coverage?
Well, by our ordinance, it wouldn't help it at all.
Okay, cuz, okay, right, cuz of, yeah, recognizing.
Yes.
But was, was done with grass, it would be.
It would, it would, that would, but I think where the concrete ends on each, from each property, if a car were to travel across, it would actually not be on that, concrete, concrete doesn't extend out far enough to catch the tires.
Okay.
That's what I'm trying to, if that makes sense.
No, it does.
The asphalt, the asphalt does cover for tire tracks, the problem you have there is that the water does go down onto the asphalt, that was grass, it'd be pure mud.
I, I guess we're running up against, there's no accommodation of these narrow lots, as we, we, a new project goes into a narrow lot, the setbacks, everything's adjusted accordingly by percentages. This is a conforming, in a sense, a conforming garage apartment dropped into a non-conforming lot.
That's a good synopsis, yes.
And there's no, we had, the town has no mechanism to I'm at to reduce the size of that garage apartment from, I'm just arbitrarily saying from seven hundred square feet to six hundred square feet to give you that room. to give you that room, uh, cuz the the applicant has a reasonable application to put a garage apartment in, but the lot is doesn't really lend itself to it.
That, that's a good, that, that's a good, uh, synopsis of where we are. And as the applicant has said a number of times, um, they really can't make it any smaller than it is to provide two parking spots in the garage for cars, which are required for this application.
Right. So that's the conundrum.
Yes.
Any other questions from the board to Mr. Barry? But to open this portion of the application up to the public for public comment?
I'm sorry, it, we, it, it would be questions from the public of Mr. Barry.
I apologize, go ahead of myself. Questions only for Mr. Barry. Mr. Cohen.
Uh, hi, Thomas J. Cohen, six twelve Third Avenue, uh, Mr. Barry, um, as long as you've lived there, um, did you build uh, the rear addition or the rear deck or the rear patio?
Yes, we did.
You built all three?
Yes, we did, uh, was for my, um, my in-laws, uh, so that we would have a bedroom that, uh, was next to a bathroom on a floor that they didn't have to climb up the stairs. Again, basically just accommodating my family.
Great, and and you built, you knew you built to the maximum at that point, did you not?
I didn't have to come for a variance for it.
Okay, and, um, are are you an engineer?
I'm not, I'm a retired schoolkeeper.
Okay, so in terms of these pavers, that's just your own research, that's not professional research, correct?
Well, no, it's not, it's my own research, but I'm also, I've been assisted by, you know, very capable, uh, architect.
But that architect's not an engineer, is he?
But Cohen, Mr. Barry's didn't testify as an expert, testified.
Okay, I just wanted to establish that, I mean, I wanted to know where where it came from.
Well, what's, what's, what's established is that he's an applicant. That was not providing expert testimony, that's what's established.
You make choices on on different parts in the design process, this is a choice that I made, um, among those.
Thank you, sir.
All right. That's the, that's the application.
Uh, there's, there is another member of the public.
Okay, project.
Sorry, definitely not her.
Not her.
Yeah, happens all the time, it's her computer, uh, Tom McGuire, six ten Brynley Avenue, um. I I just feel like there's a lot of confusion around the pavers. Um, are they really, cuz I looked into the system a long time ago, and I know that it's a hex pattern. Are they actually pavers, or is it like a hex pattern and it's filled in with just dirt? Or filled in with rock, grass? I I, cuz everyone's saying hex paver and it's impervious, is actual paver that goes in between all those hexes? Or what goes in that actual hex pattern?
Mr. Barry, can you answer that question?
Yeah, the hexes, the hexes are like shaped as pavers, you drop them in, you hammer them in, you can do it with rock, you can do it with grass. I was plant, I was hoping to plant with them.
So you're gonna put dirt?
Oh, it'd be, yeah, there's dirt underneath it, you put dirt in there and you plant grass in there, and the pavers hold everything up while the grass comes up in between them.
So what that does, that prevents?
That's your understanding too, Cherry, right? You can do that, right?
No, that, that's not my understanding, uh.
Yeah.
My understanding, and Mr. McGuire asked a good question, um, my understanding was that the paver would go right in the grid and fill the void.
Yeah, cuz I researched these and I I was gonna put grass on top of it or rock. Cuz I've been on top of those, I was at a restaurant and they had it one time, and the rock literally fills on it, and it doesn't let it continue to disperse, cuz you were asking a question about walking on rock and it moves and it does. But from what I've researched and when I did that, it fills in those hex patterns. And the rock holds it or grass, and then it doesn't disperse, that's what it's meant for, so you don't have to maintain it. And it doesn't have to move, that's what the whole purpose of it, and that it does let the water seep through, so it does. I know it's on the code cuz it's a new pat- new thing, but then that does make it, um, pervious. So, uh, that's why I wanted to just make the clarification, what he's filling it in with, it's not a paver, it's grass, correct?
Uh, my, my, yeah, my understanding is that you could grow on top of it, but I'm like very open to whatever you know, uh, gets me the 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 most accommodation for impervious and quite requirements. I thought I was getting that with this, tonight I've learned otherwise.
Cuz it would.
Okay, so, so, so I have to jump in here, um. So, uh, i- if you're, if your desire is to put the grid in and seed, topsoil and seed, uh, that's not acceptable here because you need to have a driveway to the garage, or else it's not a garage. And and the grid itself is, does not is not considered a driveway. Um, if you wanted to put the grid in with stone and fill it in, that would be a driveway, you wanted to just do plain stone. Again, that's a driveway. If you wanted to put the grid in with a paver, that's a driveway, porch paper.
Okay.
Okay, but.
Well, we, we need, I know we need a driveway.
Grass, that's not a driveway.
My, I'm, I'm, my understanding was, and I saw pictures of cars on top of this with grass, but again, I need a driveway, I'd rather it not be a big cement slab. You know, so.
Well, you, you're the app, you gotta tell us what you're proposing, so the board knows what they're they're voting on.
Like Moss, what, what are my best options here, cuz I don't really care. Uh, I would go with the, uh, the stone. The stone that we have now, yeah.
So, okay, so let's stop right here, so I can, I can kinda help the board and frame everything, is that okay?
What we have is existing stone, and then we're gonna continue to use that.
Okay, so, so the board understands then, um, what the applicant's proposing is that the driveway from the street to the back of the house will remain as is. And that the driveway area that's proposed for the two parking spaces between the back of the house and the new structure, and to get to the garage would be stone.
Without the grid.
Without, without the grid, it sounds like, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Now, that's permissible, um, and if that's how the applicant like to go, he gets the benefit of uh, he he gets, um, he gets, you know, more, less, less impervious area, it's always hard to say. Um, and, but it's gonna be a little messier situation for him, he's gonna have to maintain it, break in the stone. That type of thing, as long as he's willing to do that, and it doesn't.
It's the existing.
Fun.
What we do now.
I didn't finish.
No, I'm done, I just wanna make sure the board understands the options before they vote.
I see, I see Mr. McGuire has his hands still up.
Yeah, sorry, I just wanted to finish, I I just still wanna be clear on this. Because I I know we're dealing with, if he puts just stone, that's gonna be impervious. But if he puts a hex that holds the stone, that has a hole through it, is gonna be pervious?
No. No, it's gonna be, it puts the paper.
Being pervious.
Say that again?
If he puts the paver in the hex, it's pervious, I mean, impervious.
But if he puts stone in the hex, it's pervious?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. So, we need to know what is being proposed.
The existing usage in the back is stone.
So you would, so, okay, so you're proposing that you'll make that, the limits of the driveway that is shown on your plan will all be stone. So between the new concrete pavers that you're showing in front of the garage to the elevated masonry patio, and across your property behind the house will all be stone.
Yes.
Okay, so, Mr. Moss, would you be able to, uh, show that on your plan and revise your plan?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, if that's what's being proposed, and the condition of approval would have to be just that, that you would like to uh, submit revised plans showing a stone driveway from the back of the house to the front of the new garage. And if everybody's okay with that, then we can proceed.
Well, I see we have a couple of comments, Mr. Catelli.
Yeah, I just have one question, I'm not very familiar with this new plastic hex scenario, but I know decades ago, I think it was Laureate Builders put up a bunch of houses to the west of Fletcher Lake. And in the front of the houses, they put in for lack of a better phrase, impervious masonry blocks in there that grass grew up through. Is something like that more efficient, more economical? More, you know, impervious? Or more pervious than than plastic?
Oh, they're proposing no plastic.
Well, what is actually out of it, I thought I said it was.
No, the hex is gone.
Okay.
They're doing stone now.
It's gonna be all stone, okay.
Right, which, which I would be, uh, objection, I would object to pers- uh, as your professional if it were down near the sidewalk, where it could rut out and wash out into the sidewalk during rains. But it's in their backyard, it is an approved surface for a driveway. And if they would, if they would elect, and that's what they wanna do back there and maintain it, then that's on them.
How how would that, that stone that I'm talking about that Laureate did in their backyard benefit both the owner and the town down the road? Because my thought is, what you had said with stone, it's gonna be ruts and and gravel and problems. Where if we had a strong base and put stone inside that or grass inside that, you potentially are not gonna run into that. You know, groove problem and maintenance problem.
Well, the the, uh, application or the, the location of the project you spoke of, I'm also familiar with. Uh, it's on Lake Terrace Avenue.
Yeah.
I believe, okay, um, and those were park, drive, parking spot driveways along the front of the properties next to the sidewalks.
Correct.
That's why the concrete grid was required, they didn't have the, uh, the one that's being proposed here, I guess it's a heavy plastic or something. Uh, that is a concrete stone, I believe, with holes in it, and they use that, the plant grass, and and the grass comes through. The problem you have in an area like ours, where you only have a six to eight month growing season with grass is during the winter months, the cold, the freeze, it's very difficult to get grass to grow in a small little area. You just can't do it, it's very difficult, and 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 you end up with just a mess, uh, in my opinion.
Alright. So.
Again, I'm just thinking of of potential options.
Yep, um, you know, listen, I I'm not here to tell you guys which way to go, I'm just trying to to get it on the record of what they plan to do so you can vote on it. It sounds to me like where we're at now is, again, the driveway stays just as it is to the back of the house. And then from the end of that driveway up to the new garage, they're proposing to put stone in at the limits that are shown on your plan now.
I think all of us that grew up at the beach, that's all you knew was stone.
Yeah, I'm saying there's anything wrong with it, just that that that's their proposal right now.
That's the application. Mr. Rose, Mr. Rosenberg.
Actually, what's.
Yes. Yeah, and it is what's there now, and it's not uncommon in our area.
Uh, my, my comment is, it's great, I like the idea that we're going with the stone, pick up coverage, but right, but I think right up to the doorway of the new unit, it should be a, some kind of a couple foot buffer, you don't want stone going in for the house.
They have a buffer, uh, in, if you look, there's a masonry, uh, patio.
Yeah, there is, I thought that, oh, that's staying.
Yeah, that's not going anywhere.
Okay.
And they're gonna put concrete pavers under the, in front of the garage underneath the, where the garage projects out.
I I thought all that was coming out, I think.
Well, I mean, I I haven't heard that, I, when I, when I summarized it for you, I summarized it up to the.
You did, they set up the house, you you summarize it, they set up the house, um, you wanna make.
And then the new concrete papers.
Okay.
So.
Mr. Murphy.
As long as everyone's okay with that, cuz that's what I'm gonna be looking for when I go there. And the applicant's looking for a CO.
Perfect.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes, Mr. Barry, possible solution here for you, um, you take the hex grid.
I'm sorry?
You lost you.
Mr. Mr. Barry, possible solution, you take the original hex grid that you had, and instead of filling it with grass you fill it with stone, either the entire dimensions of your proposal, or just on the driveway nearest to the curb cut and the sidewalk, that has the cars pulling out, it doesn't create a ruts, and it doesn't kick the stone onto the sidewalk into the street. You can use a smaller amount of the hex grid in a high traffic area to lock that stone into place, to eliminate some of the traffic, so some of the ruts and disturbances caused by vehicles.
Yeah, this, uh, the 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 area we're talking about is in the back of the house, it's not close to the street at all. Um, our current use of stone, we really don't have any issues with it. I mean, ruts, yeah, but it's not that bad, I mean, it's really, you know, it's totally suitable. I thought the hex might be, um, an improvement. Um, I'm hearing here that, you know, that there aren't as many advantages as I thought. So I think we'll just, you know, resubmit as a condition of the approval tonight, uh, resubmit a plan that uses the stone. So thank you, thank you for your idea.
Are there any other questions or comments from the public?
Would the public be include the neighbors that I have on either side?
Yes, yes.
So, so this is comments from the public, so anybody who wants to make a comment, you're gonna raise your hand, you'll be called on. You're gonna state your name, your address, you're gonna raise your hand, and I will swear you in, okay?
Bob, you wanted to testify?
Muted.
He's muted.
Yeah.
Bob, you're muted.
Okay, so first, so. Chairman, are you, are you calling on Bob, I don't know.
Yes, I am, yes, I am.
Okay.
Since he was trying to get on.
You're, you're muted, Bob.
Bob, you're muted.
Hey, am I unmuted now? My name is Bob Zelinski, I. Can you hear me now?
Yes, you sworn in.
Oh, yeah. Raise my hand.
Your address, please.
Uh, four twenty three Monmouth Avenue, Bradley Beach.
Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth tonight's proceeding?
I do.
Thank you.
We've owned the property at four twenty three Monmouth, or I think about seven and a half years or so. Um, we're very familiar with our neighbors, Jefferson, Mary, and Barbara McConnell. Um, we've talked about the proposed changes, we think that that the changes that Jefferson and Barbara have proposed are absolutely consistent with the character of the neighborhood, um, I think they're, they're. I think they're they're valuable changes. And I think they'd benefit to the community as a whole. I have no objection. My wife has no objection to the proposed changes. And we actually look forward to having them completed, assuming that the board agrees.
Thank you. Mr. Janoff?
Greg Janoff, 414 Monmouth Avenue, Bradley Beach.
Janoff, do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth tonight proceeding?
Yes, I do. Thank you. I'm addressing the board tonight. I wrote some comments that I'm gonna edit and change, I guess, after a lot of what I've heard tonight. It's a little bit daunting. You know, I'm not a lawyer. I really didn't want to have a lawyer for this or pay money to hire a lawyer. I'm certainly not an expert witness. So I guess I'm just a resident, you know, and a neighbor within 200 feet of Mr. Barry, who I meet tonight officially for the first time. So maybe I'm gonna oversimplify everything, but I guess what this sounds like it comes, you know, down to is the impervious coverage, which we're working on a lot tonight, which is great. And the fact that what was summarized before, it's like a it's a lot that isn't meant to have a back house, I guess. It's, you know, it's too small. So I certainly have nothing against Mr. Barry or everything that you're planning to do with your family and all of that. I think what we run up against, though, is kind of an issue of overdevelopment in the town that we're dealing with. So so I'm speaking, you know, kind of you know, fed up about that. I mean, we know what's, and I'm not the only one in town, you know, we know what's happened with our Office of Community Development. And we know that there are pending lawsuits, you know, in the town because of projects that were approved not to code. So I'm within 200 feet. I've been notified other times, you know, of neighbors wanting variances. And this is the very first time that I've ever taken an interest in it, certainly come into a meeting or made any comments. And it's because I always felt like we have a board and we have rules and codes. And so I can, you know, trust that. And I'm not saying that this project would meet this, but then we've been very much astounded by some of the projects that we've seen go up that, you know, that were approved. So and every one of these, you know, projects sounds good, I think, when you look at them, like the what Mr. Barry, you know, wants to do, but but taken as a whole, when we keep approving them, you know, gets a town that is overdeveloped. We've owned our home here for also about 20 years. We've lived on the street full time here for about seven. I've met Bob once or twice. In our experience, you know, this is a wonderful street. The mayor lives on our street. I learned that Mr. Moss, the architect, lives on our street. You know, it's it's a great neighborhood. And so I I'm kind of also upset that I have to stand here and speak against a project for a neighbor that I don't even know and certainly have no, you know, ill will towards. Maybe we would become friends, Mr. Barry, you know, we live within 200 feet of each other. But I have to, you know, sit here and not stand here today and and voice my objection, which is really kind of a lousy way, I guess, for me to say hello neighbor. But the consistent granting of variances, you know, which go against specific codes that are meant to protect Bradley Beach, means that I guess it's, you know, us as neighbors that have to stand up and that we can't always rely on our boards and our builders and architects to stay within the rules. So without a doubt, we need to have variances, and there are always exceptions to every single rule. And again, I'm no expert, but a variance, you know, needed to install a ramp for a disabled resident with a ramp isn't code would seem to me to be a really obvious example of a good, you know, variance granted. Or if there's some kind of a retaining wall that needs to be put up because there's flooding and the wall itself isn't to code, I mean, that's something that I guess would, you know, I would also consider. But when the exceptions, you know, become the rule, that's when I think we have a problem. So there are obviously reasons why a lot this size was meant to not have a back house, I suppose. Now that I understand that the house is compliant, but the lot, you know, is not. There are definitely reasons that we limit maximum impervious coverage. And you've heard tonight, Monmouth Avenue is near Sylvan Lake. You've heard all of it about the the problems of water going down the south side of the street. And Mayor Fox alluded to the fact that the borough is investing, I think, a couple hundred thousand dollars to fix that problem. So thank you. That's been a longstanding problem. And certainly, what I hope, what I'm hearing tonight is that you're having solutions where if you do approve this, you know, where any kind of water problems would be taken care of perhaps by fitting it into the project that the town is spending a couple hundred thousand dollars on. So, you know, the application that I read for the variance.
Mr. Janoff, Mr. Janoff, just say, you know, we we limit these comments to five minutes. So just keep that in mind if you're.
Are my in?
Yeah.
All right, well, I'm.
I'm not rushing you, but you know.
No, I'm almost done. I'm basically saying that I think the hardship that is in the in the application is, I'm quoting, "out of narrowness of the property, purpose of zoning ordinance would be advanced by deviation from requirements benefits outweigh any detriment to public good." And that's the end of the quote. So the hardship is the size of the property, obviously, which everybody, you know, knew going in. You know, again, it's, I I wanna, I wanna be friends with every single neighbor and welcome every neighbor with with open arms, you know, having to even make this make these comments while I'm looking at Mr. Barry, you know, in on the Zoom call is really difficult. You know, there were rules for a reason, I guess. And if the lot is too narrow for a back house, then 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 we shouldn't be building back houses on lots this size. So thank you very much for your attention and for everybody on the board for your volunteer service. And if if it is approved, I would love to hear a meeting about, you know, what hardships were considered to grant that variance. Thank you.
Ms. Janoff?
Hi, Shawna Janoff. Actually, my name is officially Shawna Greenblatt. And I'm, I live at 414 Monmouth Avenue. I'm not sure if I can. I guess you have to swear me in first.
Yes, raise your right hand, please. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth tonight proceeding?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm not sure if I can say it any better than my husband Greg Janoff just did. But I will state for the record my perspective on this. I am against the granting of variances for overdevelopment of this lot based on current zoning and land use requirements and the negative impact of exceeding impervious coverage. We've seen enormous development in Bradley Beach of late. With an already rising real estate market, we're experiencing experiencing an even greater spike since the pandemic, and Bradley has become a hot town in which to own a home. Home assessments have gone up astronomically, and new construction abounds in all parts of Bradley Beach. At the same time, we're a densely populated borough with little open space. Buyers are coming here to renovate homes or build new. We've become a desirable town in which to live, but with that comes the challenge and greater need to preserve the integrity of our housing, stock and resources, manage parking and take care in creating a responsible approach to further development. That Bradley Beach has moved to a land use board, effectively combining planning and zoning, is a critical step in ensuring that development and use will be monitored more efficiently and aligned with both short and long term vision. In early fall, the Bradley Beach Mayor and Council approved a $225,000 or so expenditure to remediate a longstanding problem of street water flooding on both blocks 400 and 500 in Monmouth Ave. This was just discussed. This, as a result of what has been identified as a spring that flows underground and consequently stormwater overflow that has run down the street for many years. The excess water has been problematic and a nuisance to homeowners on the south sided street with stagnant water freezing in winter and a concern for insects breeding in standing water in summer. In addition, the topography of the south side of Bradley Beach is such that the water table is higher and most of the homes here require some pumps to remove the excess water that rises in basements, many of which flow to the street. Since Superstorm Sandy, this area of Bradley Beach has been modified to be at greater risk of flooding per FEMA. We have owned our home in Bradley Beach for 21 years and full time since 2014. At that time, we built a built a new home on our property, ensuring that we worked within the zoning guidelines for our lot. Years ago, a neighbor fully paved the backyard of his property without a permit so that the front house and back house and pavers likely exceed the 60% minimum coverage minimum, maximum. To this day, there is concern about the stormwater and some pump runoff. A property on Evergreen Avenue, which abuts our neighbor's backyard, just built a front and back structure with a pool. The rear structure was approved for a single car garage, and yet it stands at 24 feet. Likely it stands at 24 feet and likely cannot accommodate a car based on its location and the turning radius. And in practical terms, this this back structure acts as a cabana, which is not permissible. Another neighbor was recently granted permission to build a two story garage apartment on their corner lot, also not.
Ms. Greenblatt, I'm gonna ask that you address the application. That's before.
Okay, I I think I have an opportunity to speak about this subject and to speak as part of the public, and I'm nearing the end of what I'm speaking about.
Okay, and I'm gonna ask you that. I appreciate that. I'm gonna ask you to address the application. That's before the board.
Well, I am addressing the application because this application is about impervious coverage. Another neighbor was recently granted permission to build a two story garage apartment on their corner lot, also not permissible, though allowed to go forward. And in the 300 block of Monmouth Ave, a two story garage apartment was approved after it had been made clear that it was not following its original plans. There, these are only a few examples. In the vicinity of our home, at some point, overdevelopment has just got to stop. Per Borough Engineer Gerald Frida's letter of November 3, 2021, for this nonconforming property, I say no to the request to increase building coverage to 41.3% from a maximum allowable of 35%. I say no to the request to increase impervious coverage to 78.8% from a maximum allowable 60%. Further, the fact that this property has a shared driveway may be regarded as a further existing impediment to adding a garage apartment. The parking and access for cars would create a disruption for both properties, which would likely send more cars to the street for parking. Finally, in reference to the zoning board of adjustment application justification as, quote, hardship arising out of narrowness of the property, I find this an insufficient reason to grant a variance. While the property.
Ms. Janoff, I'm gonna ask you, please wrap it up.
Wrapping it up, thank you.
While the property owner may wish they had a larger property on which to build, this is their lot and not a hardship. You buy a house near a freeway, near a school, beside a stream, on a small lot, you are doing so knowingly. There is no hardship here. I thank you all for for serving in this role and ask that you consider this application with these concerns in mind as you evaluate the variance request.
Thank you very much.
Can I respond to the Janoffs?
No.
I have one more comment.
You you have an attorney who can address this in summation.
So one more comment. Mr. Cohen?
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm on Jane Noble's computer. Mind that.
I I I didn't call you, Ms. Ms.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you, sir. This is, I just want to warn you about this pervious pavers variance. Grant that, and that is listed in.
Mr. Cohen?
Thomas J. Cohen, 612 Third Avenue.
Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth tonight proceeding?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You have to be careful with this additional variance for the pervious pavers. They're not in the ordinance. It is an additional variance. And if you grant it, you're gonna have multiple requests for the utilization of this product. So it's not just specific to this application. I would advise you to vote no.
So, Mr., just so you're clear, and I don't know if you you heard it, because but they amended their application. They're putting in stone.
But is it stone in these things or is it just stone?
Stone.
No.
And so, okay, great. That's fantastic. I'm happy about that. But the problem we have here is not the narrowness of the property. It's a 5,000 square foot lot, and if it was a vacant lot, it would absolutely be able to accommodate this back house and a reasonable front house. But as the applicant has already testified, he built the addition with no variances. He built the deck with no variances. He built the patio with no variances. And now he wants variances. He himself overbuilt the property and now wants more relief. So when he started this process, it was 32% building coverage. So he had about 150 square feet left. And he was 64.7 in terms of lot coverages. He was already over because of his previous development. Now he wants to be 43 point, 41.3 in building coverage and 78.8 even with the stone because the stone is gonna compact and and not be pervious. So there is absolutely no benefit to this application to the Borough of Bradley Beach at all. And the applicant has created his own hardship and doesn't really have the standing in this room to be able to ask for these variances now after he's already taken everything. I mean, what happens when he has great grandchildren? We gotta build a yurt back here? I'm a little puzzled. But it it it's it's the, there there should be no conditions of approval on this application because there should be no approval. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and Board. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Any more comments from the public?
Ed?
Seeing them.
No, there's Christine McCam.
Christine McCam, okay. Very good.
Yes, hi, I'm at 421 Monmouth Avenue, Bradley Beach. And my question really is just that.
I'm sorry, so you're gonna testify, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So raise your right hand, please. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth tonight proceeding?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
So I would just like to echo the Janoffs and thank them for actually discussing as far as the just even the water problem that we have on the south side that is just, I've been here for 32 years. And it's beyond ridiculous, but my just question really is in regards to I am surrounded by rental properties and just the parking really and access to be able to even be in front of your home. I try to look at the plans and see what impact that would have as far as additional people on the street and really, that's just where, as a resident of this town and having seen just more and more rental properties and more and more cars, it just becomes more and more difficult. So that's really all that I wanted to be able to just share. And I wasn't able to be in the first part. I just got off of work, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCam. Chrissy, anybody else?
I am not seeing anyone else.
Okay.
Ed, unmute.
Oh. There is Ed Devaney, I believe.
Yeah, you have to unmute yourself. It's in the bottom left hand corner.
There you go.
Hi, my name is Ed Devaney. I live at 425 Monmouth Avenue in Bradley Beach. I've resided here for.
You've sworn, Mr. Devaney, you've sworn.
Oh.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth tonight proceeding?
I do.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ed Devaney. I reside at 425 Monmouth Avenue. I've resided here for 30 years. I'm a next door neighbor to Mr. Barry. And he's, him and his wife Barbara have been wonderful neighbors for the last 20 years. We've had no problems whatsoever. We're considered really good friends. And I have no objection at all for the new structure in the back. In fact, it'd be a big improvement from the the existing structure, which is pretty unattractive. So I just hope that the planning board will approve Mr. Barry's application. I have no problem whatsoever with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Devaney. Anyone else?
I am not seeing anyone else.
Let's close this portion to the public. Any comments from the board for Mr. Wang? His summation. So I'm not hearing much from the board as far as their thoughts or. So I'm not hearing much from the board as far as their thoughts or. Mr. Wang, since we're not really getting much, anything you'd like to sum up?
All right. First of all, I'd like to thank the board for I understand that this is their their first meeting as a land use board. And you can see what you've gotten yourself into in terms requirements. And I thank the the people who came out both in favor and and against the project. Because if we talk it through, it it benefits everybody. But to state that the lot is too narrow for a back house is just inaccurate. They are in a R zone, which permits a rear one bedroom garage apartment under 25 feet in length with side setbacks of five feet and a rear setback of five feet. This structure is conforming. The lot is not too narrow for it. It's the impervious issue that that comes and what we've done is offered a number of ways to alleviate that. And we the dry well will be a significant help on in connection with it. There should be no runoff of any storm water. The structure itself is replacing a structure which is nonconforming, that is, it's setbacks are improper. And furthermore, it is a fire hazard as described. We've done all we can in terms of trying to alleviate the impervious coverage. Not by technical issue, but rather by offering the stone in in the rear, which would affect the ability to move the impervious. The impervious aspect is just worried about mostly water content. I thank the board for its help. And I submit that the project will enhance the its aesthetics will advance the purpose of zoning as opposed to what's there right presently is. And the benefits of the nonconforming situation will outweigh any detriment to the public good. And I thank the board for its help.
Thank you, Mr. Wang. Any final comments? Any feelings on this?
Can I ask a question of Mr. Moss if he's still with us?
We've somewhat closed the application, Mr. Wang. Mr. We've closed that. Mr. Rosenberg?
No, I'm waiting. I'll make a motion if requested.
Any comments beforehand, what people are discussing this? Because it seems that the issue is the impervious question. And it's pretty severe.
Hi, Chris.
Mr. Rosenberg, if you'd like to make a motion, please do.
Dave, Dave, does it want to say something? David's up.
Yeah, just that I know the impervious is is a question. But over the decades or the centuries here, the ordinances have changed dramatically. I I think the majority of the homes in this town, if you went around with the ordinances that are in place today, most of the homes in this town would not meet code. I think my feeling is that we're trying to come to a solution here that best suits that the town, the 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 owners and what the town is about. But you know, what the ordinance is today is not what the houses that were built 100 years ago were were designed as. So that's my thoughts.
Are you moving a motion to approve or disapprove? Or no?
I I would make a motion to approve.
With when you can this conditions.
I I would make a motion to approve with conditions of as discussed of putting in the impervious stone.
Dry wells.
Doing a dry well.
And not rent not renting only the family, no rent as long as they own it.
I don't see how that's enforceable.
I don't know if it's enforceable, but we should put it on.
Okay, so we Mr. Cattrelli's Cattrelli is the one making the motion. So what's?
We're adding to it.
Well.
My feeling is that the family is trying to work with the town to make it better. And what I see is that the the neighbors that are on either side of the property believe that this is a positive influence to the area.
So so so, Mr. Cattell, your your motion is to approve and then as I understand it, the conditions are the dry well and the stone in the in the rear. Is that correct or is there anything else?
Um, I that's what I think. If there's something else that needs to be put in there, I don't have a problem with it, but I think I'm trying to work with the town to to better things. I think the the immediate neighbors feel that this is a benefit for themselves, the town. I think it's overall a good thing for the town. But I mean, mo- most of us in this town will not meet the ordinances that are in place today. If you start taking out tape measure.
All right, so we have a motion. Is there a second?
I will second it.
Mr. Marco?
Actually, I was going to say, can you read the I'm I'm confused about whether we're putting rental stuff in there. So can you just read the motion cleanly, please?
I I think what they said is that we can't legally put in rentals. Is that correct?
So it's just with the dry well and with the the stuff.
So I think it becomes an enforcement issue. I think that was
No, I'm comfortable. Yeah, I'm comfortable voting now. Yeah.
All right, so so we have a motion to approve second and the conditions are the dry well and the implementation of the stone, so.
Pardon me, but you had the tree. You offered to plant a tree.
Right.
Um, there there are other conditions that were discussed.
Uh, elaborate on the the other conditions and.
I take back my second.
Okay, so what I've written down as far as conditions, if it got to the point where you were making a motion was that drainage improvements and a grading plan had to be provided to collect the runoff from the roof and provide proper drainage out to the street. Uh, they agreed to remove a tree or a small little whatever it is on the neighbor's yard, which is close to where the new structure in between the two structures and that the property owner would donate a tree to the shade tree commission. A new revised plan showing the stone driveway and parking area from the back of the house to the front of the new garage with as is proposed a stone surface. Now, if there were others, I could have missed one, but they're the ones that I had written down.
Yeah, Jerry, that first that you talked about, does that include the pop up emitter?
Yeah.
And that, yeah, okay, I'm sorry. I just wanted to make sure that was part of the recommendation.
Yeah, it's the runoff out to the overflow out to the street. Yes.
God, thank you.
Yes.
I would I would agree with all the things that that Jerry just brought up.
I'll resecond it.
Okay, we got a second.
How about the rental? I'll send it. It's not in.
That's not that's not in the motion.
Okay.
Board Secretary?
Do we? Do we have a second or we don't?
Mr. Rosenberg.
He said he took it back, so now we're. Okay.
Gave it back to you.
Oh, thank you.
After I agreed with Jerry, probably agreed with all of us.
Okay, so Mr. Marco, yes. Uh, Ms. Harrison?
Uh, I'm actually going to vote no.
Okay.
I, um, going back to kind of what I started with my my questioning earlier. I I think that there's been a lot of discussion, two hours worth of discussion about impervious coverage. And I think what this comes down to is there is just a very big ask for a very small property. And I don't know that this fits with what is best, you know, for the property.
Okay. Um, Ms. Riley, I already.
I also am voting no. My overall feeling is that it is too much of a structure for the lot size of where it is. And I do think that it speaks to a lot of the overdevelopment and potential future issues of density for the town.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy?
So.
I I didn't hear. I didn't hear, Mr. Murphy. I'm sorry.
No.
No.
Oh, God.
Um, Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Shook?
Bill, you're muted. Bill. Off. Like I said, I it it's a struggle with all this impervious coverage. It it's a lot. And that's why I was hoping that somehow we could eliminate some concrete wherever, try to reduce it as much as possible. I mean, the dry wells are gonna help. The stone is gonna help somewhat. Like it was said, not really that much. I don't know. 78.8%. That's a lot. And I don't think it's gonna help that much. Uh, I mean, the applicant did try to reach some agreement with the board on many other issues, but I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to say no.
Mayor Fox?
Yeah, I'm I'm gonna I'm gonna really cover four things. Number one, I think that the safety issue, the fire code issue is one that caught my attention. If that improves the safety profile of that site, that's certainly a positive. The the amount of effort around the dry well, the pop up emitter and the other mitigations in the stone. Uh, I it does not get us to where we want to be from an impervious standpoint, but I think it deals with the the issue of runoff. You know, the statements made about the project, the sump pump project is actually it is a groundwater prob- problem. Uh, and it's alleviating a sump pump pumping into the street problem primarily. So I'm not sure that factors, except that if they if they do connect that runoff into that sump pumping and will directly into the storm drains. So, you know, I think the owners have tried to make their design at a minimum in the context of sizing. Uh, they're faced with a significant issue. I mean, an issue that is significant in our town, which is which is lot size. But I think they're making the efforts to mitigate the the primary issue, which is runoff and impervious cover. So I and and I I do put a lot of weight on the neighbors, both pro and con, and I appreciate both the pro and con of the neighbors. But I will, I'll vote yes.
Uh, Mr. Cattell?
I vote yes.
And Chair Mayor?
As I alluded to before, we have no mechanism to deal with these lots that are narrow. And to scale the property down, scale the addition down to fit the lot to help alleviate impervious coverage. This impervious coverage is I even with the emitter, even with the gravel, I just can't get to it. I have I nothing against a back house garage on that property. But the scale to the width of the property, everything about it just does would try to squeeze a lot into a small lot. And there's some real detriments as far as drainage and impervious coverage. I vote no.
So Christie, as I it was the the application is denied. Okay, application is denied.
Is there anything else? Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Just if I could just before we adjourn, Christie, when's our next meeting?
Um, we do not have anything scheduled for next week. There was there was nothing ready for next week. So our next meeting is in fact going to be February 17 um, at 6:30 and will take place via Zoom.
Very good.
And do I have a second to close the meeting?
You just repeat the date. It's February.
17th.
February 17.
Yes, it's the the third Thursday.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
All right.
Hi.
All right.
Good night.
Thank you.
Hey, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Be safe, be healthy.